It's going to be those nights, I just have that feeling. At this point in time, I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order, and it sounds like it's going to be an interesting one. Be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors hereby enters into a closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following: Discussions concerning a prospective business or industry or expansion of an existing business or industry where no previous announcement has been made of the business or industry's interest in locating or expanding its facilities in the community; Project Number 2016028 and Project Number 2016029; Discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or disposition of publicly held real property where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body; Former Blacksburg High School property; Consultation with legal counsel and briefings from staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body; And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring provisions of legal advice by such counsel; Mountain Valley Pipeline; Discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplinary, or resignation of specific officers or appointees or employees of any public body personnel. Is there a motion?
Some is.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Hough?
Aye.
Six hours, one stand.
Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Some is.
Close session, please. Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
No, I abstain, I was not here.
Chair Hough?
Aye.
Six hours, one stand.
Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative vote recorded and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from an open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And this is our Board's word that we are only talking about things that we're supposed to be talking about in closed session. Is there a motion?
Some is.
Second. Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
I abstain, I was not there.
Chair Hough?
Aye.
Six hours, one stand.
At this point in time, we're going to observe a moment of silence, and then I'm going to ask the county administrator to lead us in our pledge.
Let us pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item on our agenda is public address. Is there anyone here from the general public who would like to come forward and raise any issues that you might have? Seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to go ahead and close public address. Mr. Administrator, is there an addendum?
No addendum this evening.
Is there a motion to go into work session?
Motion.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Demott?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
I abstain, I was not there.
Chair Hough?
Aye.
Six hours, one stand.
The first item on our agenda in work session is erosion and sediment control ordinance.
Mr. Burton, our county engineer is here to go over the items related to that with you this evening. There's also information in your agenda packet under Tab A. Doug, thank you.
We need to check up, Mr. Meadows. Appreciate talking to you, talking about this. Basically, the county ordinance is okay, but what's happened is changes have happened in state codes that mean we have to do something called a regulatory crosswalk. Basically, where the responsibility and the regulations went from one state agency to another, it caused all these changes in the code regulations. So you had things that were all under Title 10.1, now they're all under Title 62.1. And so now all of our code compliance callouts and ordinance are now all correct. And that's the biggest part of all the individual revisions to the ordinance. And there's some sort of minor technical criteria stuff that has to be matched with the new criteria that started in 2014. But that's already something that we have in our ordinance that needs to be matched. So that part of it is what I think the county is kind of compelled to do. We're also proposing a couple of other conditions. One is the issue to regulate steep slopes in the county. Basically, we're talking about slopes that are steeping at 3 to 1, approaching 2 to 1 slopes. As an illustration, you can easily mow a 3 to 1 slope. You start getting into a 2 to 1 slope, it's very difficult to mow, and it starts to become unstable. I know you've all seen roadside cuts that are all sudden broken and fall apart. So it kind of becomes not only an environmental issue, it can become a safety issue too, to look at some of these slopes, especially when they get to excessive heights, 25, 30 feet or so. So we'd like to add that to it as just part of this, as we have the opportunity. Another change that's outside of the state code compliance part is we'd like to revise our fee schedule, because the way we have now for commercial projects, we charge a small upfront fee, and then we charge a monthly. And what we've found is it becomes kind of onerous, not just for the county staff, but for the developers also. And talking to some of the developers, they've told me they'd rather pay a much bigger upfront fee and not have to worry about getting that monthly bill. So if we could charge something that's closer, that actually would match what we're charging now in our stormwater management ordinance, because this will only apply to projects that are less than an acre. Because once you get more than an acre, then it's going to be part of the stormwater management ordinance, and then you've got to hold a new set of fees. So this would just match what that is. Because what we do in our stormwater management, if it's part of a common plan of development and less than an acre, we charge this fee, so it would match what we're proposing tonight. So in a nutshell, that's probably what, that's what we're proposing for the revision. I was going to ask you a question.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I have one. You referenced the slope angle, that VDOT that we have on some of the roads.
Yes.
This one you want to go to 3 to 1, will that also apply to VDOT when they're doing those projects?
Not yet, because VDOT has their own planning process. They don't have, they're authority all and of themselves. So they don't have to come to us for stormwater.
That's for sure.
The only thing is, if you had a VDOT project that had a attached project, like you've got a big road project, and then the contractor elects to do work off the VDOT construction prism, then that can become accounting responsibility. As a matter of fact, in recent years, VDOT has been more and more towards pushing these things off to the counties, so they don't look at things before the plans are done. They just tell the contractor, you're responsible for doing any off-site work, and you need to get all the fees and regulations done with the counties that you're working with. So in that case, yes, we'd put it.
That's all I have.
Supervisor Demott?
So the way that I understand it with the new fee structure, if somebody was to be developing, say, a single-family home on a half-acre parcel, then they would pay an upfront fee of $260 for erosion and sediment control. Is that correct?
Yes, and we actually already have that for single-family homes, I think. It used to be a monthly fee also, but it became so onerous, they said, no, let's just change that to a one-time fee. And of course, you know, some commercial projects can have a much longer lifespan, so it kind of makes sense to have monthly fees. But now that we've got stormwater management, and it gets over acres, a whole of the fee structure, it doesn't make a lot of sense. Because these guys can write, if you've got something that progresses very slowly over, say, a two-year period, then monthly fees would add up to way more than what we're charging.
Okay. And then, I'm looking through, and I'm not finding exactly... Let me kind of work my way through this question for you. We, what we are doing tonight on our consent agenda is scheduling a public hearing, correct, on the updates to the erosion and sediment control plan?
Yes.
The language in the code section that we were given gave us the criteria for scheduling a public hearing, and I wish I could find it really easily. It gave us the criteria for scheduling a public hearing, and I was wondering, and you might have to come back to me, Chris, and let me find it, but I was wondering if the two additions of the regulations addressing the steep slopes and the revised fee schedule are what prompted us to have to schedule a public hearing?
No. No. And we had a change, the biggest thing we're doing is we're updating the ordinance to comply with the state enabling legislation. And then, it was this opportunity that Doug wanted to take advantage of this change to go ahead and address the steep slope problem, and also the inspection fee. So that came about because we were already having to update this. So either way, we had to have a public hearing.
Okay. Okay, that answers that question. Thank you.
Yep.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, and the public hearing, is it the August 22nd one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the, anyone that's listening tonight are, you know, and can get information in case they have comment. That's all.
Thank you.
Supervisor Creed, and I'm going to ask you that, I was talking to a lady at the grocery store, and they said, will you please make sure Supervisor Creed moves that microphone closer to him? So I promised her, I gave her my word that way.
Oh, man.
No, it has to be closer than that.
Yes. I know you're shy, but you've got to move it closer.
That's the closest they can get.
Oh, see.
Well, just move your chair over there.
How's that, anybody?
All right, here you go.
Well, I had to put it back. Okay, I do have one thing. If you have folks, especially in the outland areas, that deal with water every day, but it's not water that we're furnishing, it's with water wells and this type thing, my question is, is do they charge, or are we charging for that as well as things that they're not using?
No, if you're talking about the installation of wells, that's such a supervisor creed. We would look at those as being such a small footprint, that they're actually automatically exempt from the erosion and sediment control regulations. So anything that's under basically 10,000 square feet of land disturbance, which is any man-made change to the surface, they're exempt from having to make a plan. Same thing with single-family homes, because they are just single-family homes, they can sign an agreement in lieu of us being tasked with paying a consultant firm to develop a whole erosion control plan for their, because it's not unusual for a single-family home, if you have not just a well, but a grain field, a house footprint, new driveways, they will go past 10,000 square feet easily. But to not be too horrible, then, we're not making them do a plan, the code allows us to do that.
Outmaking what, was that?
They don't have to produce a plan. Like, if it was a commercial site that was disturbing 20,000 square feet, they would have to produce a plan and have it approved. A single-family home, even if they're disturbing 3,000, 300,000 square feet, basically to take the truth, they wouldn't have to have a plan.
Okay, but 100 and below is not?
10,000, sir.
10,000 and below?
Which is basically about a quarter.
Okay. And that is for all the water used on the property, or can they still use water where, let's say, let's say that they have a garden, or this type thing, you know?
I think this is much more of the erosion control as far as banking and stuff. It doesn't really regulate the water use on the land if I'm, if I'm right.
No, if it's a small gardens, or if it's an agricultural activity. Agricultural activity, say with lagered software, big water use, big land disturbance, if it's agricultural use, so it's automatically exempt.
So if anybody with agricultural use, then all of those would be exempt, is that what you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's all I know.
Thank you.
Supervisor Perkins?
No, thank you.
Supervisor King?
Yeah, would you explain a little bit more about the slope? You said it's a safety issue?
It can be. It's not so much a safety issue if you've got somebody that's just, they've got some outdoor field material, maybe you need to place to maybe make the grade of the property a little bit better. But joy of, you know, as the county grows, and developments go out to the steeper areas of the county, because we're going to run out of all the flat layers after a while. And as they go out to those areas, you're going to start to see structures built close to these steep slopes. So beyond what the building code tells you, you need to have something to make sure that these steep slopes are stable. When you get down to, say, 3 to 1 or less, most materials, even sandy materials, things that are pretty, you can still say, yeah, they're pretty safe. Once you start to get to 2 to 1, it's not safe. And it could be you've got material in the ground that's safe at one time, but it would be good for us to have somebody give us a report that guarantees it's going to be stable at that stage.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is that, no further questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Next up is Emily on Watch for Children sign policy revision. Am I right?
Yes, this has been an item that we've discussed with the boards and possible changes for a while, and Emily's here to share some of those revisions with us this evening.
Staff, just wanted to give you an update before we formally put an updated resolution on your agenda. So the board first adopted a policy back in 2000, and then in 2013, there was an update for a state code change. It cites 33.1, and then it goes and lists each of these items as a numbered item in the policy for the board to provide direction. We require that there's a petition submitted by the citizens who are interested in it, and there's certain minimum threshold requirements to see if it's a good location. You wouldn't want it on 460, you wouldn't want it on a higher volume road. So if it meets those certain threshold requirements, then there's some more direction about a continued review, and then we would ultimately submit a written recommendation to the board. The board would then authorize the county administrator into an agreement, and we would purchase, install, and maintain the signs using a VDOT land use permit. That's what the policy says, although the things at the very end have been sort of loosely done up till this point. But since the last update, there's a new state code section that cited, so that means that our policy points to the wrong direction, much like Doug was just talking about, and there's a different agreement that VDOT would like for us to have. Some of the things that just came up as we were doing the review and the update that I don't necessarily want to use to sway you in any direction, I just want to make sure that you're aware of them. These signs are approximately $1,000 each, and then upon a review, multiple signs could be asked for, depending on the site distance, one in each direction, that sort of thing. And then there is a land use permit application fee, and as the county, VDOT can waive it, but they can't just blanket waive it, they have their process that they go through. Now, multiple signs can be put on one permit, so that if we had maybe two subdivisions come through the process at the same time, we could group them together. And another item that came up as I tried to look at what other people had for their policy was, I kept coming around to a lot of folks saying that they don't do them any longer. The Federal Highway Administration code basically says they're not as effective, people see them but don't see them, they're visual clutter. Probably, we use this example today when I was talking to VDOT, if you go down 114, there's a lot of signs along that road. They went looking for one particular one, had to go back two or three times, and they were looking for it. So we don't know inherently that these make neighborhoods any safer, but they are commonly requested, and we do have a policy to consider potentially updating. So staff's recommendation is to take the existing policy, take out the specific state code citation. That way, if state code changes again, all we say is that it's consistent with the VDOT and state code requirements, and it won't necessitate a having to come back. Keep those minimum threshold requirements, because those are the things that make sure it's an actual neighborhood, and that we're not looking at putting it on a 55 mile an hour highway, which is not the intent. Then just provide some general direction, like we do in the current policy, the staff work with VDOT, to come up with recommended placements, just for the maximum amount. They like to have one near the entrance of a subdivision. The one that we're currently looking at now is off of Thomas Lane. The request is for a road that's a little further down. VDOT's recommendation is to put one closer to the beginning and also further down. So this is sort of what we're already doing. And then ultimately, there's a new agreement that we would like, we would put in the resolution to have you authorize Craig to sign in. And that agreement would stand, and then as we reviewed other applications, we would just add an addendum saying which route number it was for, how many signs, and their locations. Still with this process, we are in charge of buying, installing, and maintaining the signs. And by we, I'm going to say general services, I'm not sure specifically, but just that that's a county requirement. And that's pretty much all that I had for you guys. Just wanted to bring those things to your attention, make sure that you're comfortable with that before we formalize it into a resolution for you.
I'll start off. Supervisor King, do you have any questions on this? Supervisor Perkins?
No.
I just got one.
Oh, okay.
So you, you say VDOT says these signs are useless, more or less?
Well, the Federal Highway Administration says that they're not effective tools. Our VDOT says, if you send us this resolution and enter into this agreement, we will authorize you to put the signs up.
At our expense.
At our expense.
At our expense.
Yeah.
A thousand? How did you come by $1,000? I mean?
We used the number, the number 850 was used in the original document from 2012, and they went in and added the CPU index to that, and we set approximately $1,000 per sign.
Did you talk to Steve about this?
I did not. Steve can probably get them a little cheaper.
Actually, I'm talking about having his group put them up and...
Well, they already have the responsibility for that, based on our existing policy.
And what's happened is, since we don't have a crew that puts up road signs, we've contracted back with VDOT, and that's their fee to put up a sign.
I was going to say, because he's already on a skeleton crew.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Supervisor Perkins?
No.
Supervisor Creed?
Got nothing.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, the Federal Highway Administration, don't they just deal with federal highways? Why would they be dealing with?
They provide that.
They provide the MUT.
That acronym that I provided there, it's the...
And if I remember right, that's the Municipal Uniform Traffic Control, I don't remember what D is, but probably. That's the book that any road engineer will pull out and show you.
It is the, it's the guidance for all traffic engineers.
Okay, I just don't think of them being involved in neighborhood signs for some reason. So, okay, when you say maintain the sign, so if a sign gets hit, or a sign gets graffiti on it, or whatever, then it comes back to the county to deal with?
It is our responsibility.
To fix it, or whatever. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Demott?
No.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Don't have anything.
I don't know who said it, I think it was maybe Mark Twain, that the truth is a whole lot like poetry, nobody really wants to hear it. And hearing, seeing that, because I always, at least I like to think I know this, you know, children that play those type of signs, and deaf child, you'll see those signs as well, but I'm interested to see that studied, that aspect of things, just to see how they come up with it. So if you get a chance, I don't want you to spend a lot of staff time, like, two minutes or three minutes, and shoot me an email, I'll be happy to take a look at it.
I don't mind at all. I conferred it with several of my friends who are in the transportation world, and they said, why would you even do a policy? And I said, well, lots of places have policies, we're running a policy, I had found other ones, but other localities have created brochures and said, we'll make sure your speed limit is adequate, we'll do some other things, but we're not putting up signs, so.
Thank you.
I like to see it, too.
So if you want to send it, just send it to the whole board. Thank you.
If I remember that MUT CD book, you ought to finally bring it, because it's like...
That's not a book.
Are you going to help us also with the VDOT Smart Scale program? Formerly HB2?
So last year, we called this HB2, but thanks to Senator Carolina, we call this Smart Scale now. Basically, if you'll remember, when we talked about it, probably at various meetings last year, localities, NPOs, and PDCs are eligible to submit projects, and these can be certain transportation projects based on classification, highway, bike and ped, there's even a transit element to it. So they break down who's eligible, and then what types of projects are eligible. Funding is available at the district level, so we, as a locality, can apply for district, sale of district money, and we also apply at the state level. We can put our hat in the ring for both. PDCs and NPOs can only compete for state-level money. That makes it a little more fair for some of us localities to get funding. Not all projects qualify, and this is important. This is not intended for the smaller projects, like we put on our six-year plan. These have to meet a need in Vtrans, and those acronyms there are quarters of statewide significance, regional networks, urban development areas, and then basic transportation safety items. This process began last year, but we did not submit. We didn't have projects in the queue, we didn't have time to basically go over them with you guys, and that's what I'm going to be giving tonight. I'm going to show you some candidate projects that staff has worked with VDOT compiling, and we're going to ask tonight that you basically endorse the projects if you like them, or don't endorse them if you don't feel comfortable. And then also, as part of the application and scoring, we have to rank them. We have to pick our number one, our number two, and our number three, and that's important for this process, because everyone's number one in the whole state is scored, and then everyone's number two in the whole state is scored. And they keep doing that until they run out of time, because it's a very lengthy application process, and so there's a chance our number three could not even get scored. Last year, they actually scored most all of them, so we'll see. Basically, this year, the window opens August the 1st, which is why I'm here today, so that we can get our ducks in a row and be ready to start our application. And we have to have it be done by September the 30th, and then the scoring process takes over, and ultimately, the CTV makes their decision. Just to give you an idea of the scoring categories, it's congestion mitigation, economic development, accessibility, safety, and environmental quality. For us, we are scored in category C. So here are a few potential projects. Supervisor Tuck is smiling. The Planning Commission sold these, they did like all the projects, they did not rank them, but think that they're all good projects. And he's laughing because I'm not a graphic artist, so they're just, there's some shapes on some areas. This intersection is Allegheny Sprague at 11460, and you guys will be familiar with this, because over the last year, you've had several citizens come and speak to you about it. We have the 11460 corridor plan that has been prepared and adopted, as well as the Shawsville Village Plan. Our proposal is to basically put in standardized turn lanes, which would be 200-foot turn lane with 200-foot taper. And then also, the additional item you see here, so these turn lanes are all 200 feet, standard turn lanes. This area here would be what VDOT calls a right turn slip. So if someone is going straight or left, right turns would still be able to move. And so that is basically that project in its entirety. It's consistent with the plan we have for 11460. In the Shawsville Village Plan, we also have a pedestrian element shown for this intersection. But as you know, we currently don't warrant a signal there, and without a signal there, there are a lot of concerns for pedestrians being able to safely travel. This median refuge here, most of it will be taken up by the turn lane, and so at this time, we don't have a pedestrian element to this project. But we do feel like it's a good project, it would score well, and it improves safety The second project that we're going to talk about tonight is at Route 8, the intersection with Union Valley and Ferry Church. There is an existing project here, which is shown sort of right at the intersection. There's a left turn here, and a left turn here. So you can go left onto Ferry Church, or left on Union Valley. And there's a stormwater pond there, that's the element. And all of that, including a small pedestrian element, are part of safety funding. That's going to go up to... That's going to go up to bid any day now. This year, that will go out for construction next spring, I believe. What we would be doing is, originally, that project was drawn at a much larger scale, and due to funding constraints, it was squished to what basically we're putting up to bid right now. What we would be looking at is expanding it back out. And so what you can see here, hopefully, in the blue box area, would be to keep a center turn lane here for left turn movements into these commercial uses. And also, the travel lanes would stay clear. There would be curbing on either side, and this would tie into, they're putting a sidewalk here, this would tie into the sidewalk and take you all the way to the school property.
Would it take you to the improvements that were made in front of the schools as part of the work down there?
This would tie in to the work that the school's done. There's a gap that Paul Brown measured, it's approximately 920 feet, and that's the length of this improvement. It would tie right into what the schools did. It would also take care of, there's an additional two inches of pavement needed on the other side of the school project, so this would sort of tie that in. And for our village area here in Rider, it would lengthen that amount of safety for the left turns going in and out of there. So traffic would be able to flow along Route 8. Route 8 is not a corridor of statewide significance, but it is one of those roads in the regional network that I was telling you about earlier. The third project is another intersection project at Route 114 in Prices Fork. This intersection, this general vicinity is very heavily traveled, and there are different issues related to topography, right-of-way, things like that, that have kept it from really expanding in years past. But what you'll see here is, again, a representation of extending this turn lane, putting in a standard turn lane there, a standard turn lane here that would take you out onto Prices Fork, and then probably another one of those right turn slips here that we talked about earlier. Not a full turn lane, because there's a squished amount of right-of-way here. And this dashed line here represents a pedestrian element. So we have a lot of pedestrians in this area, and when you go and review the Bellevue Village Plan, it talks about there being basically a pedestrian, it's an eight-foot path from the intersection all the way up to the manufactured mountain park, going towards Christiansburg. We have elements of that in place right now with the Forest Hills Development, the Dollar General that's getting ready to be constructed there, will have room for the sidewalk, and also with the Bellevue Saint Cross to School project, which this will extend basically up to, this will tie into the crosswalk that's being proposed there on Route 114. So this is the third and final project. They all three are intersection projects, and we think they will all score very well. They're all located in our UDAs, that was another scoring criteria. So staff and VDOT have worked together to try to put together items that we think will score well, and will offer the biggest improvements. We also removed some projects and are working with Dan Brew and the NPO about potential other projects, and we'll keep you updated on what the NPO submits also. So if you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them, any comments on the projects. But ultimately, like I said today, I'm looking to make sure you feel comfortable with all three of those projects, as staff does, and to see if you would like to rank those. Ultimately, you could also not rank them, and just as we go through the application process, we could rank what we think's going to score the best and go that way. So that's completely up to the board.
Start off with Supervisor Shepherd.
I guess the ranking would be the only thing I'd have anything to... I think we should leave that up to the people that know what they're doing.
Supervisor Demoss?
I'd be interested to hear from each of the three supervisors. I think one is in your district, one is in yours, and one is in yours.
Well, actually, it splits that 114. He's got one side of it, and I've got the other.
I would be interested to hear from those districts, those district supervisors specifically about the intersections in their district. I know we've had, I've heard public comment on the one in yours, Mr. Creed, but not about the other two. So I would be just kind of interested, you travel them more than I do.
I've got more.
Supervisor Biggs?
Just knowing all three of those are all important. Took really three good ones. When they rank them, does the ranking have anything to do with the traffic patterns of how many cars a day go through any of these?
You mean with the scoring?
Like, when they do that, yeah, do they look at that at all? Because I would imagine that might be something, they're all three busy, but there might be some that are busier than others. I wasn't sure how that...
They each are busy at different times. As interesting, as we've heard before with the Allegheny Spring, a lot of times, you've got left-hand motions that are blocking up.
Right.
And then you've got the ability for good sight distance and staying out of the travel lane on 460. And you run into some of those same items at AM and PM peak on 114, turning on to Prices Fork. You've got spillover into the travel lanes, and that's one of the things we're trying to address. So these are the items that were scored on, once again, and so congestion management and safety are going to be, are going to score really well for us. Another item that's going to score well for us is environmental quality, so with any of these projects, we are not currently impacting any wetlands or streams, things like that, and that's where that score comes into play.
Okay, I'm sort of like April, I'd like to know what the other supervisors think, but just knowing them, because I've been on all of those, they're all needy. They're all three so needy.
Supervisor Creed?
Yeah, could you pull the shovel? It's very rough. I know that's got to be older than Methuselah.
This is pictometry and imagery from last year.
Yeah, because, you know, you've got a turn there in the library, that is no turn, never had one yet.
This is the actual area.
Can you give me some color on that to them?
All right, the library...
I know where it's at, I just don't...
There's a Metta Brook Center.
See, the library's up the road, and it comes in and parks at the library.
This is the Y area right here.
The Y is down straight through. If you're coming off of the mountain and come across, you're going to be, the Y is going to be on your right at that point. Then George Smith has got four or five places that he's rented out within there, too. So that portion there that's wider than, I mean, it's just different. I mean, it's all broke up, and I didn't know whether you meant for it to be broken.
That's the original, that's the photo off of like a Google map.
Yeah, this is just an aerial photograph of what exists there now.
She hasn't done anything to that one. It's the, the next photo is showing the turn lanes right there at Allegheny Springs, and then where the old bank is across the street, and then you've got the, is a Dollar General, I believe, down in there.
This is Dollar General here.
There's a Dollar General, you see the top of it, the roof of it, right, that's it.
Yeah.
Or...
So this is, and this is the Metta Brook Center here.
And then...
That's the Y.
Metta Brook Center?
Where the library and...
And the Y is right here at the bottom. Can you see the little cursor moving on it?
Yeah, I see that on there, but it is, she says that's a Metta Brook Center?
Well, it used to be Metta Brook Nursing Home, but...
I'm telling you.
Says Metta Brook.
Unless I'm looking at something wrong, Metta Brook Nursing Home is on the other side of the road. And that may be where I'm turning around.
No, that's the bank is on the other side of the road.
This is your eastbound travel lane of 460, and this is your westbound travel lane of 460, so that might help. This is going towards Christiansburg, and this is taking you up to Ellison.
Okay, yeah, that's...
Yeah, that's the...
That's a better understanding of where they act.
Metta Brook is down here.
Yeah, this is Metta Brook down here, and this is Allegheny Springs.
That's, I've got, that's completely turned around where I'm at, so I can live with that.
Supervisor Perkins?
Nothing. Well, I'm glad, I think they're good projects to have the turn lanes, really, truly. But has anything been said at all about putting more turn lanes on the whole of the 460, 11, to, because anybody in the left-hand lane for most of the way, there's no actual turn lane that you can get in and go, go through. And I know we've talked about that a lot.
We do have the 11460 study that's only a couple of years old, and it does an analysis of each crossover. I can, I can share that with you guys, and you can ultimately prioritize those, those would be potentially good candidates, because 11460 is a corridor of statewide significance. It's also a regional network, it's also hits three of our UDAs, so certainly, those could score well. Some of those are slated to be closed, and that can often be an issue for local traffic. But you're right, when there's no lane for people to get into, it can create a hazard, which is why some of them are...
Well, if the speed limit is 60 miles an hour, people are going 65, maybe 70. And somebody in front of you doesn't give you a really good signal, you're up a creek, because they stop right in and out of the road to turn. And so that's the same thing that happens here, though, even though you've got more distance to get across, it's still not the length of a car or any of those things. And so it's also 45 miles an hour through there, but nobody, nobody travels 45 miles an hour or so. So it is, the whole road needs to be considered, but they obviously think it's too expensive.
And right, and I imagine that would be, if we did the whole road, we would not be, that's not going to fit into, I keep wanting to call it HB2, just because that's what I heard.
That's what it is, Smart Scale.
Smart Scale program, I'll get it in my head.
But some of them will. I mean, you can do them in slots, you don't do the whole road at once. You just do slots. There's one going up right now. It's down close to Lafayette, really.
Yes, there's a new left turn lane going in as part of the Dollar General project there, just past Akbar on Green Hill.
Right. There's, you know, there, because they've got the little, oh, I don't know what to drum, they're telling you. And you can see that it's new. But I was thinking, not only for this, but for the future, to get some turn lanes in, and like I say, you can't do it on every single crossover, that I know, but you, at least the ones that you're anticipating, have the most traffic on them, it would seem to me. Like, now, there are some coming off of, what, 603? And you just, I'm just saying, as we go along, I think left, the turn lanes are really significant.
Sure, and we can certainly do that and prioritize some of those. After this year's cycle, they are going to take two years off, and then they'll start the application process again. So we'll have some time to go in and prioritize and rank some projects.
And look at the traffic patterns, but there are so many that go off. For instance, if you're going down to that, just before you get to the turn there at Hales coming toward Christiansburg, there's a motor home down in there, and there are a lot of motor home parks, a lot of activity there. And some of, there are one or two that might be lengthened, but for the most part, there aren't any there, really.
Absolutely.
Oh, I do? Oh, okay, oh, all right.
I think Supervisor King is trying to persuade. Supervisor King, do you have any consequences to ask Ms. Gibson? And then what my plans are, is then to kind of talk about these projects a little bit more, but Supervisor King?
Have any of these projects here, I mean, all three of them, important? Do you think we can do all three of them?
I talked to Chris Price today, and he thinks they potentially all could be funded. He thinks they're all very strong projects. I worked with him and Paul Brown, just to make sure we had a good scope, and we will work for the next two months to work on these applications, and we think they're all good candidate projects that will all score well. So we're in a special situation where we can get state money and district money, and the CTB will hand the Salem District a certain amount, so we could get some state funding, and then what didn't get funded with that, we could get some district money on. So we feel like they're good candidate projects and potentially could all be funded.
I mean, I don't want to knock the other two, because they're important, too. Been on that section right there on Route 8 there in Rider, I mean, it hadn't been long ago, you know, a gentleman got killed in that intersection. And, you know, if you go out there to leave in the morning or in the evening, man, you sit there forever. I mean, I'm not saying that their district's no better than that, but I'd like to see all three of them get funded.
But that's, we've been working on that thing down in Rider for a very long period of time. We've asked for a light there, and there's nobody want, somebody told me today at that meeting that, "Oh, well, you can't put lights up, because that slows traffic on the road." And I'm thinking, that's exactly what we want to happen at that particular point, you know?
I know, did you, or are you done with your questions?
No, I appreciate the work, Rider.
Supervisor Demoss did have an additional question.
Could you go back to the scoring matrix?
And I should say, this is overly simplified. It's, if you print it out, it's about six or seven pages of information we have to put together.
The reason I asked you to go back to that is to see, category C is, and please excuse me, I forgot to bring my glasses tonight, is that 25% for safety, or is that...
25% for safety.
Do we have safety data for any of these three intersections?
So the state provides the safety data. They have a map on their website that you go, you can pull all the crashes and all the safety data from. And last year, when they did it, it only went up to 2012, but supposedly, this week, they should have all the way up through 2014 data. And the data shows not only the crashes, but whether it was a single vehicle, whether it was a deer, whether it was a rear end, things like that. So they really can get into the data and see that, okay, we're having a lot of rear-end crashes here, and a turn lane lengthening would improve it. So they get into an analysis of that.
Okay. And then to throw a monkey wrench into everything, you're welcome. At the VDOT meeting that the town of Blacksburg hosted today, talking about the intersection of North Main and 460, several citizens approached me to ask specifically whether or not Coalbank Hollow could be included in the plans for the 460-North-Main interchange. Is that also funded using the Smart Scale or HB2 mechanism, and is that something that can be looked at?
Were they specifically looking at the crossover at Coalbank Hollow?
Yes. The North Main-460 intersection is the ninth most dangerous intersection in the Salem District. Coalbank Hollow is the sixth. And so the citizens were requesting from me and Mary, I saw, I'm not sure if they asked you the same thing.
Same for me.
If there was any way to consider those two pieces in one application, even though it would be a town application and a county application, so I guess...
If that's something that we wanted to do, it's not impossible. It's one of the things we've talked to them about relative to, if two localities wanted to go in for something together, there should be a way to do that. Right now, the way we do that is through the NPO, and so it would be something I would want to talk to Dan about, because it wouldn't be just our project, and as you guys have know, that was the only project the town submitted for HB2 last year. So since it would be in two different localities, one of us would have to pick it, unless we were to use the NPO for the PDC.
Would you mind to take that to the NPO?
Certainly, we can talk to Dan and Kevin and try to make a plan, if that's something that, at the tech, at the advisory committee, we would probably talk about it at that level, and then promote it up to the policy board, and they would ultimately make a decision on that.
I have to say something?
Yes, but I do want to keep us on this, and rather than the NPO, and as far as that aspect of things.
Well, I'm talking, what I wanted to say is, it's exactly the same kind of thing that we're talking about, and it would apply to this, and people ask me the same... that we're talking about, and it would apply to this. And people ask me the same thing, but it has to do with a very big safety issue. And so it's the same principle. There's no way to come in and out of there, whether it's down 460-11, or if it's 460 where the, you know, the other project is. But what I had problems with is when the BDOT man said to me that they just want to keep the traffic flowing, and they don't want the traffic to stop. Now, I don't, I don't know what that means, like even on 460, where we're talking about the projects. But everything you've named, and I travel that road quite frequently, as well as out to the Ryder Road, and those are very necessary projects. And so that's what I was coming back to.
Okay. And I would be happy if, if you had said, look, if we could do this under the Smart Scale program, and include the North Main project, and working with the town. I like that idea. If that was the proper vehicle for it. But if going through the NPO is the proper way to get us there, and that's what staff has told us to do, then that's what I want to do. And so I didn't mean to say, or I didn't want it to come across as, I like the idea of cooperating with, whether it's the town of Christiansburg, town of Blacksburg, to make our county a better place. And that is a very dangerous intersection. But if I'm hearing you right, the NPO is the right way to go for that?
The NPO or the PDC, because otherwise, it has to come from one locality, and that one locality would have to then rank it and prioritize it. There's currently a way, other than by using our PDCs or our NPO, to collaborate on a project.
Okay. And going back to what's before us, then, going on this, as far as board discussion, I do have one more question for you. As far as congestion mitigation, do we, does VDOT also provide us traffic numbers, so we could look at Route 8 and say, okay, here's how many cars, here's how many cars that go through Route 11, here's how many cars around 114? In my mind, and this is, so do they have that information?
Yes.
Would, none of the sites really are economic development issues. It's much more safety, congestion, mitigation, maybe accessibility, and then when, you know, the cars are backed up and the safeties are a issue. Environmental quality, I don't know really applies to any of the sites, although the 10114, there is a creek that's right there. But maybe, and when we're looking to prioritize, we could get that information, and without knowing which one is the highest traffic count, how do you use the safety issues, the most dangerous, and I'm looking to my supervisors, and congestion, and utilize those as being the two factors if we're going to rank them.
But it does affect economic development, because all three of those are people coming in or leaving work.
Yeah.
Right. But when I think of economic development, maybe I'm thinking of the wrong way. It's like, okay, are we going to be building a plant, and is, you know, or a shopping mall on the other side of it? Or is, am I thinking of economic development where they think, you see what I'm saying, the two different thoughts?
So it's kind of interesting, because that's one of the items that's been modified since last year to this year. Because they didn't clearly define it, localities got a little creative and claimed projects miles away from intersections and things like that. So they have more narrowly defined economic development for this application process. And it is mostly tied to Commerce Park, things like that. But because we have these regional networks, you know, Route 8 gets people to and from, not only Ryder, but also Floyd. And so we do, it is a heavy commuter, actually, all of them are heavy commuter areas. I can definitely get you numbers. If you'd like to prioritize based on just whoever has the most crashes and the highest volume, you could provide that direction tonight, and I mean, we can ultimately come back and share. But if that's how you'd like to prioritize them, we can get those numbers together and share that back to you.
And I was throwing that out there to talk about, not, do y'all agree that that would be an objective criteria to look at it? How many numbers, how many safety issues, just like you're talking about a fatality there, and being able to look at those numbers? Because all of us have an interest. You know, I go through one of those interchanges every day. You go through the one every day. I don't know if you get on 114 as well, but then Gary probably goes through that interchange every day as well. So all of us have seen it firsthand.
I think if you're going to do anything further, though, you need just to get something she can give you to carry at this home, as far as each individual of those.
Well, you need to know this tonight, right?
That was our hope, that you would endorse the projects and potentially rank them. If you don't, if, you don't feel comfortable ranking them tonight, and just want to get some more data, SAK can provide that to you, just via email in the weekly report item.
Would the first meeting in August be too late?
As long as you're gonna, if the board feels comfortable with all three projects, we can get started on those now. And then we can come back to the eighth meeting, the meeting on August the eighth, and have you do a final prioritization, if you'd like. David Clark will also be here that day.
When you asked me if I had any questions, I said, I think we should leave it to the experts. And what I meant by that, and I guess the question to you would be, if we say, okay, you ranked them, what's your, what's your mechanism for doing that? How do you go about doing that? And the reason I'm saying leave it to them is because they do this kind of work, they're more likely to get the money.
So that's actually how we would probably rank them. Once we laid them all out and worked on the applications, we would probably prioritize the one we felt would get the funding, and then the next funding, then the next, is probably how we would want to, because we think, we do feel they're all good projects.
And how about this, and also, and this is just, since I've been here in a little bit, I'm very protective of staff getting involved in a political decision. And so it's our.
Well, I agree with what he said.
And so, and so one of the things I was thinking is, maybe get them to rank, or if that's okay, rank them, then the final decision is.
And then have a discussion about it.
And then have a discussion about it.
Would you make the final call?
And the final decision is, well, not a process.
Okay.
We won't, perhaps.
Don't listen to Todd.
As long as it's whatever one you want.
The other item that's important to mention is, we will be submitting this before September 30th, and we'll be hoping to get this funding by 2022. So it's not going to be next year. It'll be ranked by next year, but we won't get the funding until 2022.
Emily, thank you very, very much. Is there any other, I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Is there any other questions or any other comments?
One more time. Make sure you get enough money.
No pressure, no pressure at all.
Thank you very much.
That was the last item in work session. Is there a motion to go out of work session?
Motion.
Second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Perkins?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Annette, are you, would you like to take a break?
Yes, please.
I'll tell you what, it's about 8:25. Let's get back in 10 minutes at 8:35.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Go ahead and call the meeting back to order. You will note that Ms. Perkins is not here at this point in time of the meeting. She has had a family situation, and she's had to leave. And that's unfortunate, and I'd just ask all of you to keep her in our thoughts and prayers. Is there a motion in regards to consent agenda?
Semin.
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
What's that?
We got one thing to discuss.
The consent.
Just one question.
Yes, yes, absolutely. I'm sorry. It was an issue in regards to consent agenda.
I just got one question. This is for the Alliance for Better Childcare. We discussed that as the one-year trial, right?
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, ma'am.
Sorry about that. I didn't mean to cut you off on consent agenda.
No problem. Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Old business. Ordinance granting tax exemption on personal property, the Blacksburg High School van boosters.
Semin.
Second.
Any discussion?
One, if you give it to one school, are we supposedly going to give it to the other?
I would think that all of them would end up, all they have to do is ask. But this is the Blacksburg High School van boosters, and what it comes down to is, they were being taxed on a van, or not a van, a trailer, excuse me. The other is a van, the other. And so they already do qualify, and we had the public hearing, and there wasn't any comment. But I would expect that there will be more charities that will be coming forward and ask for the tax exempt status in the future.
It was brought up, why wouldn't they give it to the school system itself? But what would happen if they give it to the schools, then they would lose control of it. And they could, and the schools could sell it as surplus if they wanted to.
Right.
It's not that much money.
Seventy dollars and 58 cents, which will decrease every year.
And they do a lot of work, the booster does. They really do.
Now, the folks who, whether it's Blacksburg and throughout, I love seeing the volunteers and the like. So was there, there was a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Ordinance granting, next on the agenda is B, ordinance granting tax exemption on personal property, New Hope Residential Services Incorporated. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Old business, C, ordinance amending Chapter 3, Section 3-31 on animals. Is there a motion?
Motion.
And is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
New business, resolution of support, the Montgomery County Sheriff's Office Citizen Support Group, and grant application to the community foundation.
Semin.
Second.
Any discussion? I know we have some folks here from that group. If there's any questions, is there any questions that any board member would like to have, or the like? This is very time-sensitive. They do need us to pass it at this meeting.
Is this a one-time deal, or?
It is just us saying the foundation, it's them applying for a grant. It's no money from us, but we're just showing our support for them in the, in trying for the grant.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
And then, correct me if I'm wrong, I think I got that right.
I think it's absolutely worthwhile. It would be money very well spent.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
And it's so good to have this group, especially after all the recent events, that just, that group came upon its timing, just like perfectly.
There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
Next up, county attorneys report.
Mr. Chair, I just have one item. I just wanted to inform the board that Ms. Caroline Elephant, who's the attorney in DC, who we've been talking with about representing the county in the FERC process and the MVP request for certificate. As I told you before, Ms. Elephant has tremendous experience with FERC. In fact, she started working with FERC as an in-house attorney, and then has been in private practice now for some time. But she's agreed to represent us, and what she'll be doing, most likely be, she'll be viewing the record, looking at what possible comments we can file prior to the draft environmental impact statement coming out, which is due out in September. And then when that comes out, the draft impact statement comes out, which is one of the big milestones in the process. She'll be helping us in a, in a vital role, kind of giving us ideas and giving us advice on what we need to comment on and to put in the record. So what I would ask the board tonight is, if we could, the board would consider a resolution authorizing her to represent the county in this FERC process as legal counsel, outside legal counsel.
I'm going to ask for a motion.
Semin.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion.
Just to clarify, we're talking about doing a preliminary to the DEIS, and then a post-DEIS.
Right. Yeah. And so our budget should be 10,000 to 15,000. It won't, it won't go over 15, and it most likely will be between 10 and 15. And if it costs more than that, which we don't expect, if it does, then obviously, we'll talk more. But right now, no money's being authorized to spend. That's our budget. And then, once she starts doing the work, we'll, the board will breast on what that costs.
But I guess the motion, the resolution, asking her, is it, at this point in time, capped at no more than 15,000?
I think the resolution right now is just authorizing her to represent us. But the, right now, the cap, like, right now, the budget's in the 10,000, 15,000 range.
And.
But I'm not saying we're spending that. I'm just saying, that's what will be proposed, and wherever it's spent, we'll come back to you and advise you.
Okay. Is there further discussion on that? Because I do have some questions myself personally. But I'm comfortable with the 15,000, no more, in my mind, because I like to have a kind of a line. But other than that, in looking at the information that you provided us, you'll be able to provide us good guidance.
Yes, sir.
And try to avoid some of the environmental hazards, and try to, if this line is going to be built, have less than the impact on the citizens of Montgomery County. So I do think it's money well spent. There's this motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Creed?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Mr. Moss?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair of House?
Aye.
Six ayes.
County administrators report.
Just one item this evening, Mr. Chair. I did attend the work session hosted by the town this afternoon for the proposed North Main Street 460 improvement project. There was a big crowd there. And I got there early, there was already a crowd. There are four alternatives that the town and the consulting engineer have developed for consideration. If you weren't able to attend, and you're interested in seeing those four alternatives, they are on the town's website, www blacksburg.gov. And again, there was a large turnout there, and I would encourage folks that have an interest in that project to take a look at what's being considered. Other than that, that's all I have.
All right. Let's see. And first on the list, the board reports, Supervisor King.
I just have one thing. You know, the weather's getting hot, and people's going to the rivers and going to the pools. Just be careful out there. We lost a young man yesterday in a drowning. And just be careful out there.
Supervisor Creed?
No.
Supervisor Biggs?
Okay, to follow up on Craig's information, April and I, when we, we just happened to be together at that meeting, and I did pick up the form that was given out. So I have a form that I can leave with all the board members. But the comment sheet, all the comments are due by Monday, August 1, and they go to a website, northmaininterchange@blacksburg.gov. But they ask five questions, and they basically, after looking at all the alternatives, they're interested in knowing, you know, which one is your top, any comments that you want to make about it, what do you think is the most important aspect to include on the project, what aspects do you dislike about the alternatives, and what is not included in these four alternatives that you would like to be considered. So April and I thought it would be a good idea to bring these sheets to the other board members, if they have a chance to look at it, since this was brought to us. And you can, you can put your name and address, or just put your, you know, it's optional. But it sort of gives you a look at what they're after, as far as public comment. Is that what?
Yeah.
Yeah. And just, so let's pass one to Daryl, and then we got, what, Chris and Todd and Gary, so they can have one. And you probably got one when you were there, didn't you?
Is there a way that we could scan this and put it on ours?
Yeah. Here's an extra, two extras.
Okay.
And it was well-attended. They had a lot of people there. And it was good to have it from 4 to 7, because people could get off work and come, and that kind of thing.
Thank you very much, both of you, and Ms. Perkins, for attending that, as well as the county administrator. Was there anything else?
No, that should do it.
Supervisor Demoss?
Everybody stole my thunder, so I don't have anything to add, aside from just really encouraging people to go on Blacksburg's website and take a look at the four schematics. They're very easily downloaded from the website, so please do provide comments on that.
Supervisor Shepherd?
I don't have any.
Wow, I'm going to really feel guilty, because I've got three things on here. The first, I had the opportunity to meet with the folks at Montgomery